Did you clean the wrong house last day?
No, no, I had to clean Colter Creek today. It was hot in there and then they're having some kind of issue with their water. They're waiting for our park to come in. So I had to mop the floors with cold water. Do you know how much I hate that? I don't know, especially in the kitchen because there's grease. So basically you're spitting the grease.
Let's take out the sun for a little while.
I think I have a hose outdoors that could be a lot of hot water food.
You're not wrong.
It's okay, I do it once a week.
So we get started. Public hearing with the budget this year. Twenty twenty-three in the amount of five million one hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Any comments from the public?
Well, we've got a balanced word. I'm fine with it. We've got it balanced, it works.
Yes, we can go on down the line. Okay, do I have the minutes of, everybody read the minutes of July the 12th?
Yes, I'd like to actually make a note to the council about, this is from the Idaho open meeting law manual for Attorney General. And I wanted to give you guys something. I just wanted to mention on page twenty-seven, it says minutes pertaining to an executive session shall include a reference to the specific statute or subsection authorizing the executive session and shall also provide sufficient detail to identify the purpose and topic of the executive session. So I just wanted to make you aware of that so that I'm not, I don't know pertaining means to the minutes like what we're making today or if it only means to what minutes we take in the session. I just wanted to make us aware of that.
Well, the minutes in executive session are in there for a reason, not open to the public. That's why they're this executive session.
I know, but they have to contain a certain amount of information. I want to make sure that we're putting in the right amount of information. And this says minutes pertaining to an executive session. So that could possibly mean any minutes that have to do with an executive session, including the ones we're about to vote on. You have to have the subsection and they have to have a sufficient detail to identify the purpose and topic of it.
So the subsection is one D, right? Is that the subsection?
Yes, if you go down it, that's where they identify the subsection is.
So what else is there supposed to be? I guess that, I guess I'm not understanding. So you said the subsection, which is that, but what else are you?
Provide sufficient detail to identify the purpose and topic.
So should we start spelling out what the subsection means? Is that, is that what you're wanting?
That's what I'm questioning. Is that what we're supposed to be doing? Because we have the subsection, but it says subsection and specific sufficient detail to identify the purpose.
So you just tell what it is going on? You're not supposed to tell things that are discussed?
I believe so, yeah. So you say here's the subsection.
Put that out.
Here's the subsection. Here's the specific detail to identify the purpose. This is why we're doing, this is what we're doing.
So basically, like this one says subsection D and on that sheet it says subsection D pertains to these issues. And I think that's what he's meaning as far as that we need to put in our minutes. Yeah, so because D was not, D is something different. It was another, it was a non-employee issue, it was something different.
That wasn't you.
Yeah. But I think that's what you're meaning, right?
Well, I, that I don't know. That's what I'm saying, we should find out.
Well, I'm going to a training in September, I will find out.
Anybody want to pass the minutes?
I can't vote.
You weren't here.
I wasn't here, no. I move to approve the minutes from July 12th.
All in favor? Passes. Okay, let's look at our budget, see what we need.
That bills.
Bills.
Helman Fire, I assume it was you guys, Mike?
Actually, it was Clifford.
It's always Clifford.
And the compost fallen was for hauling the waste from the wastewater.
Did you guys use roll-off box or what?
We're empty, they got all of it.
Didn't want roll-off box?
No, it was two.
They did several trips. They did two Thursday nights, but we're empty completely. Great, great, great.
So that went to Moscow, I assume?
No, they went to clear water, compost.
I thought they were accepting it.
They didn't know it was us, so.
Unless I pulled in and they took it, so.
Okay.
Nice.
Didn't even tell them to water it down, apparently.
Interesting how that works.
Yeah.
I move to approve the payables for month of July.
All in favor? Passes. Okay, we have a case in that budget.
I saw an equipment repair and I can't remember if we dropped that or.
Yes, we did.
So it says fourteen thousand. Let me see if I can find it. And there was a, I had a question about what E. E twenty-three is or something like that?
Engine twenty-three.
I'm separating them out. So actually all the auto fuel. And. Maintenance on the equipment for the fire department is one big grand total, but then the other stuff goes down below. It should be.
So.
I got rid of the four hundred.
Okay, so we have fourteen thousand on, it's under public safety. And then, so we have fourteen thousand for vehicle repairs and then a four thousand for engine twenty-three.
I don't know, maybe either that or I printed the wrong one. So, because I know I took that four thousand out.
Right, so I was just, so it says fourteen, but last year was ten. So the four thousand for engine twenty-three should come out? Or should it be ten thousand?
No, it should say fourteen thousand. So you must have an older one because I had it separated out.
This is the one that you sent, I got it.
I know, I know. And I think I accidentally sent you the wrong one.
The sheet that you gave me says ten.
Says ten for vehicle repairs.
That's for this year. That's for this year, but I think last year, but either way it's going to be fourteen thousand.
So it's fourteen thousand and then it's four thousand for engine twenty-three and eleven thousand for police?
Eleven thousand for police is because we paid the eight hundred to the office.
Okay, right, so but it's not, the four thousand is not included in the fourteen thousand, correct?
Correct. When I did the budget, so.
So it is supposed to say ten, not fourteen?
Correct. Because I might have sent you the last one, we were still working on it fixing, so.
Do you have any questions, Nikki? I don't remember what page it was on, it was under public safety.
I think it's seven or something like that or six. It's right at the beginning. I think it's six or seven. It's under the ten seventy, ten dash seventy.
Must be five or four? Wow, I can't figure it out, it's just there. I lost it. I just saw it.
Because we only had a few that we needed.
Yeah, what page are you on?
I don't know. See, I need my papers. We do old time papers now. Do you want me to come and scroll and find it? I want you to give me old time papers. Okay, we could do that if you request it, we could do that.
There it is, page two.
Two, yeah.
So does yours say fourteen as well? I assume we all got the same one?
Yes. On public safety?
So that, yeah, so public safety, ten dash seventy dash two eight zero. Says vehicle repairs, it says fourteen, it's supposed to be ten.
Mine says, one says ten, the one says fourteen.
Yeah, last year's is ten, this year's is fourteen, but it's supposed to say ten. Well, I move to approve the, are we approving it?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
The budget for twenty twenty-three with the correction of vehicle repairs at ten thousand, not fourteen thousand.
Okay.
Second, all in favor? Passes. Okay, let's go to the itch for the plow and the and the stander for our new truck coming.
Our new truck was actually built, scheduled to be built yesterday. So she should be in some sort of form by now, I hope.
Yeah, some kind of, well, with time may.
Yeah. I've reached out to the Vos Plow people in Moscow and Western Plow and I got no response back from them on anything. So this is the only one that we got a response back from. This one is the same as what Kendrick has. So if something does happen, like their new truck, their chain got caught on a brake line and they have a backup truck that will run that plow. So if we get this plow, I talked to Jake and he said that if something happens to our truck, then they do have an extra truck that our plow will hook up to.
Is it wider than Kendrick's?
Uh, I don't remember how wide Kendrick's was. Do you remember how wide it was?
It was right at the width of the truck, whatever that is, I'm not sure. And we wanted to go wider.
I think this is a ten foot. Yeah, I think Kendrick's was an eight or nine and I think we went ten.
Okay, good.
Yeah. It probably says in here, if I can read it. So the reason that they are like ninety days out on the polyhog spreader, so that puts us at like October, like at the end of October.
Yeah, that's all right.
So.
That we don't have, but we'll be resting.
Right, right. Yeah.
That's why we left that to budget, the one thirty-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-eight thousand for the capital on that, so.
And this will be a very similar spreader to theirs. I believe it's actually a little different because it's the, it's a polyhog.
It's a bigger box too, isn't it?
It's a bigger box too, yeah. We went with the bigger box for our application.
You kind of read all this stuff.
That's the only bid on the table right now, right?
Yeah, nobody else, I reached out to them a couple of weeks ago and nobody.
You gotta go with it.
Yeah, nobody got back to me.
No, they didn't mean that to you.
Yeah, well, and this one is, like I said, the nice thing about it is it's the same as Kendrick's. So if we have issues, we can borrow their spare truck.
That's bonus.
Yeah, and they seem to like theirs. We met with them last winter and Jake really loves it, so.
That's great, you can, you can go flat, you can go like that, you can go like that or like that, so. It's real nice. You can put your vials where you need them instead of.
Nick, do you think it's the thing they should be?
Well, it's not my decision, it's ours.
I know, but if you, if you like what this is, what this.
I think it's a good one. I mean, Kendrick seems to have had good luck with it, they're a very popular brand.
Sounds good. Make a motion to accept it.
Second. Favor. Passes. Okay, let's go on to this splash pad account.
So we have an account and according to Winnie, nothing has been, no, money has been put in, we're taking out of this trail account. It still has the same amount, we're just gaining one cent interest. So a month, some months I get two. How long are we gonna think about it? But what we want to do is take that money and move it to our regular checking account. So we're not saying that that two thousand is going to the splash pad. And then we can use it as the splash pad account so that we know how many funds we have and then we can just transfer when we need to pay for something liquid. And we'll get our thirty-five hundred, we can move it over into the city's checking account and be able to pay CETA with that. And you'll be able to, the auditors will be able to track it better because we don't want to just have it in an account. In the.
Should we take on that responsibility?
So, well, we would just rename it splash pad account because, and move that and then it would no longer be anything to do with the city.
Well, the auditor is still, will audit it, go through it and all that stuff. So wouldn't it be easier for us if whoever is running the splash pad deal just took out an account?
It's going to be the city's splash pad, so. Because it's.
I know, I thought they weren't financially.
No, we, no, we aren't.
Well, I understand that, I know.
That's what I'm saying, financially it's not going to matter because we're not taking it. We would take all that money and move it over into our regular checking account.
I was just wondering about the.
And then we would just, we would go in and start putting our money in there. So it would all be ours and then we could transfer it when we need to pay for stuff.
So what is that money, that money is supposed to be, we haven't used it, but it's supposed to be for the upkeep of the trail? Is that from the.
But we have it, if you, if you look at the budget under general, I believe it's under, no. Yes, it's under general. There is two thousand dollars for trail under the budget. So I think they were having their own account and then they started just adding it to the budget, but they have never did anything with that actual fund list.
I think the confusion is you, you're a splash pad person and you're a city person and when you say our, it sounds like you're transferring the money into our splash pad account. I get you, you're saying transfer the two thousand into the city's general fund. And empty that account and then rename it.
Just rename it, yeah.
Right, and then rename it as splash pad.
Right.
Alls I was saying.
That's where I was thinking.
See, my brain knew what I was saying.
Alls I was saying was that it creates something else for the auditors to deal with. So I was just.
Either way, the auditors have to deal with it anyway, so.
I was wondering, would it be possible on the city bills they send out each month to put a place where people could check yes or no whether they're interested in the city having splash pad? Because I was looking around and you're a poor gay father, it might be interesting to find out because almost every place in town has a bit of lawn, if somebody's putting a sprinkler out there if they have kids. And ones that don't, the partners down here, they don't have kids. So, you know, I've heard comments unfavorable about it because they've been saying things like, we need a library a lot more than we need a splash pad, which you can use twelve months a year for the library. So I thought maybe, you know, it might be interesting to get a little input from the general.
It should be a public, public notice, I'm sure.
Well, they were on.
I think that's coming next month.
Coming next month? I have a question. So what has the city committed to just to reiterate, as far as financially to splash pad?
Nothing, except for the land, the little part of the park.
So just to reiterate, what we voted on the last meeting was just them using our five oh one C three or?
Yeah.
That we were in support of it. Support of them, this splash pad, that they could use that land. And then we would support, then moving forward, they could raise all the funds to get it put in. Not that we were on the hook for any funds.
You gotta clean the mess up first.
Yeah, and they need, they need support from the cities to go for grants and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And the thing with the library, we tried and tried and nobody wants to support a library. We tried so hard for seven years, we tried.
Well, you gotta walk around how people try, but I think people now have more like the Kendrick Juliette page or actually Juliette Kendrick page. And it means the communication we didn't have back then.
Well, this was, we gave it up in November.
Last year.
Last year, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, we had town hall meetings, we had.
See, I haven't even heard about them.
Yeah, it was, there was a, there was a Facebook page and, and everything, yeah.
Yes, you needed more communication.
Well, we were in Locust Blossom, we had stuff in the newsletter every month, or every other time and we had a lot of communication out. There's nobody, it was the same six people all the time and it just, nobody really wants to support a three hundred fifty, four hundred thousand dollar library. And we could apply for a block grant at the same time the city was applying for a block grant for the sewer project.
Right, it was the worst fake presence, definitely.
So back to my question, so the city has not yet committed to the maintenance of this, the funding of the maintenance either?
Well, that pays for it, it takes, it's got to take care of itself.
Yeah, they were going to get funds and they were talking about getting enough funds to have it maintained, that have funds to make for the maintenance. Yeah.
They don't expect anything from the city?
Financially, other than the land, is what you're saying.
They would use our land.
To use the land, but they don't expect anything from the city financially?
Well, they were, they were talking about that if, depending on how the maintenance thing eventually would be, the city's splash pad because it's on our property, but they were going to raise enough funds for the maintenance for however long, they were going to keep a maintenance thing going. So we're just on the hook for, if they get the grant, there's match, but we can do that with work, volunteer work.
There's a lot of people that want to work, yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. This, honestly, this number six, I wish it was written different, honestly, because the questions people have asked me about, like it literally sounds like we're transferring money from the park or from the trails to splash pad.
So it should have said trail accounting.
I should have said rename. I apologize, but I didn't write it more clearly.
Or something, I guess, but.
Well, and then we'll be in a minute more clear. I think she'll put it in a minute going clear, so. So what would you want to say, Mark?
Well, you know, pretty much, I think it would have cleared up confusion or not created confusion if it was like rename a trail account. Maybe just a little more specific, but I don't know how you could have said it better, honestly. That was, but the way it reads is basically like the city is taking money from the trail and putting it to splash pad.
She'll make it clear in a minute that we are taking the funds. We'll rename it and transfer funds to the city's checking account. That's how it should be worded, so that people don't say we just rename it and we're leaving the two thousand in there, so.
Okay, so follow-up question. So when the city creates a splash pad account, that is for?
It's for administering the grant.
Yeah, so the grant has to go through a five oh.
One three C and they won't pay a group that doesn't have a five oh one three C. So they're using the city's five oh one three C status and the city will have to administer the funds. I mean, they'll be responsible for that seventy-five thousand.
So we'll just create an account and then when we're paying, we'll take money from the grant.
Thank you for clarifying, yeah. You know, it's complicated, I understand why that worked in part.
But the fund will be the grant, like if they, most of the time with the grant, you have to file, you pay the bill and then you file for the refund. So that's how it works. Like right now, that's how we're doing it. So we have to send it down to like USDA or the building grant right now that we're using. The five oh block grant is for the engineers right now. So every time I pay CETA, like I have a bill in here for CETA, they will send me all the paperwork, I have Dick sign it and then I make a copy, I send the originals down there and within ten business days, I have, I'm reimbursed for that because it's part of that block grant. So we pay for it, but we're really getting reimbursed.
All right, thank you.
Well, I move that we rename the trail bank account to the splash pad account and transfer the twenty-one sixteen forty-six to the general fund regular city account.
I see. As Splashpad Committee, thank you very much.
Decision to process for that wastewater collection study.
So for the wastewater collection study, it'll cost seventy-five thousand dollars and we've talked about this several times before. We've already received, or will receive, funds from DEQ in the amount thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. USDA originally said they weren't going to be able to fund this project. But at kind of the last minute, Howard with USDA called Stillman and said, hey, we might have some money available for you after all. So Stillman hurried up and sent in the application. And so we were awarded thirty thousand dollars, which leaves us only seventy-five hundred dollars that we would have to pay for, for this study. And those could come from the first part of the ARPA funds that we have already received.
And this is to like.
This is to study the.
Rest of the system and see what issues we might have.
Pipe, digging up pipe.
That's great that Howard came up or got that money, that's huge.
So this on the wastewater?
So instead of costing us thirty-seven five, it's only going to cost us seventy-five hundred if we continue with it.
That's right.
When will it be done?
You know, twenty-four is what it.
How long did the transportation plan take? It took a year at least, didn't it?
It takes a while.
And they've got to do smoke testing, the manholes and all that, so it will take at least a year, maybe two, would be my guess.
It's not an overnight project, is it?
It's not an overnight project.
It's going on when them people work, you know, they work one day a week and maybe a month. It might take ten years. So what do you want to do?
Well, I imagine we have to have this study.
Well, we don't have to, but for seventy-five hundred dollars, I mean, it seems like a really good deal, in my opinion.
And if we have money from.
The ARPA funds, is that what we said?
Yes. So it's not coming out of the city funds, so.
Right.
What's the big benefits of it?
The benefits?
Yeah.
Well, not getting fined for violating the groundwater is one. Because this, all the main sewer lines were put in in seventy-six, then of course there's newer ones. So they haven't had a major inspection that I know of, ever. So there could be roots behind your shop, there could be roots growing places, there could be gaps in concrete. I mean, if we don't do it now, it will have to be done someday. And not only that, but we can identify some of the places where we want to expand the sewer system. So if we want to hook up additional customers, i.e. Richland property, Live Station, you know, down there or the American Ridge property that we've, that we've included in our city boundary and also Jack Brown's property across the river. So those are all, you know, in the stud, everything will be comprehensive. It'll be top to bottom, backwards, forwards, upside down, everything.
Or we could gain more money by including some of these properties than.
And Nick is right, um, if we do the study and they find problems, it will be just like the wastewater plant. We start applying for money to fix the problems. If we have the study done, they're more, much more likely to give us money, you know, grant, or to fix something than if they just, we just say, oh, Mark, we have a huge problem, can we get money? And they'll be like, well, you didn't do a study, how do we know, you know?
What the problem is.
Yeah, how do we know that?
Yeah.
So.
One move that we, um, go with the wastewater collection studies, that would be.
Alls I hold in favor, passes.
Now we're down to the review of the proposed resolution of twenty, two thousand twenty and twenty three for the fee rate resolution.
We're just looking to see if we wanna raise anything, we don't have to make a decision on anything, right Wendy?
I don't know, there's no decision till by, that'll be next month. The only thing I went in here and changed was an increase in water sewer and garbage rates at a five percent rate.
And we talked about that because we were gonna increase it slowly because of the, uh, wastewater.
We've been increasing all those in here for the past several years.
So hopefully we can get in the black.
Yeah, we gotta keep the races going up.
Are you ready to go on?
I didn't say anything.
This isn't to consider employee raises for two thousand twenty three.
That was budgeted, was it not?
It's all budgeted.
And how much is the?
One dollar.
Is this all employees or full time employees?
That's just for the working people.
The summer hires are different.
They already got a raise, didn't they?
Well, yeah, I, I. Right.
People, operating.
For the four of them, right?
Or five of them.
We're, uh, as far as operators go, we are, I did a little research on that, and we are at the bottom of the lowest average, the low average in Idaho. We're like at the bottom, at the bottom as far as for operators. And that's just for like operator of like a water plant.
What licenses do they hold? Do they hold all the, you guys hold all the same licenses?
They gotta have license.
Well, I know, but I know there's different levels, right? Are we a different, different, is there different levels of water and sewer, right?
Yeah, and, uh. Yeah, I lost it. So I got a question, if it's budgeted, are we still required to vote on it? Because it's a, it's a raise or if it's already budgeted?
Well, if we don't approve it, then that might just, uh, might just, like I said, say that if we did, then that might just go somewhere else on the budget.
Yeah, yeah, cause you gotta, you gotta pay, so, let's vote.
So what are you thinking that, you're thinking that it should be a whole one tomorrow, or what do you think?
No, I just, um, we're, we're capable of running both water and wastewater, um, and they're hiring starting wages for like water or, or wastewater, um. Everywhere else is starting at nineteen, twenty dollars an hour for starting.
Oh, Idaho's not too high in, in any of their totals.
We pay what we should pay.
Schools are not too high, you know, I mean.
We can, we only pay what we can afford. If they pay, pay you more, then we have to raise the water sewer and hire just to pay your wages. So it's six and one half together, and a dollar is a pretty good raise in wages, that's eight dollars a day.
Yeah.
I get thirty, I might get thirty cents in next September, I think I only get eighteen this September.
I'm getting seven cents this year.
I move to approve the employee raises for fiscal year twenty twenty three in the amount of one dollar per hour per employee.
I second.
All in favor, passes. Okay, Josh, what do you got?
Uh, we, um, tore out all that exposed rebar and broken up concrete down on the corner of Fort and Main. And, uh, put in some blocks, um, so it was kind of a safety hazard. So we got that cleaned up and pretty, pretty happy with that, um, just got a bid for tank cleaning, um. We got, we got yanked around for months from this other company and then ultimately told that they couldn't do it and that we'd have to go find someone else. Uh, and we just got the bid back from, uh, some folks in North Dakota and it's seven hundred dollars cheaper, so. That's good, uh, got slip, slip tank installed in the trailer, um, we got fuel delivered. Tires got swapped on the, from the dump truck to the sweeper, uh. And today we built a lumber rack for the new shop. And got all the lumber that's out here in the old shop picked up off the ground and, and all the lumber that was in the other shop off the ground, so. It's, uh, it's good, that's really all I got. We had to put the pumps in the water, water plant, people are going through water like crazy, so.
Well, I see the revenue board's pretty low.
It got low, yeah, we had.
Pretty low in fact, you know, even half full.
Yeah. Yeah, Saturday, Saturday night, or Sat- Sunday morning, I went to the water plant and it had quit running sometime Saturday night, uh, and I had to go down and replace the pressure switch for the compressor cause that wasn't working, um, and got her back up and running and we're getting back up to to get levels, so. Got it fixed, how about you, Nick?
My thing I have is this school crossing signs.
Oh, ask Josh about the signs, cause, uh, I think, are they ordered?
And the, and stripes, being that.
We're gonna do the crosswalks, uh, but the signs are, they're, they're just.
Signs, that's gonna be tight, I, I can't get an answer back from this guy on whether it's gonna be here in time, um.
Oh, oh, but you, but I mean, we're.
He said it was twelve weeks out and I said, well, is there any way we can expedite that? Cause we'd like to have them installed for the beginning of school, and he won't answer me, so.
Are you talking the flasher?
Yeah.
Okay, just so we get the crossing, the stripes, one with this.
I noticed a wow in the bucket of the tractor, I'm just wondering what happened there?
It hit a, uh, hit a post.
Did it hit a post by itself?
No, I hit a post, I'm gonna straighten it up.
And so I.
People driving on the trail is a thing again, it's day and night, and I hate it, someone could get hurt.
What are they driving on?
What are they driving?
They're driving their ATVs.
Oh, ATV.
I drive my AC on the trail all the time.
I think this is other people, I've seen pickup down there, they took a video of it and put it on Facebook of them, their pickup on the trail. And then racers and the, the side, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, and just to clarify, you're doing that on the course of your duty as a city, a mayor. These are people who are doing a recreational, and a lot of younger people do it.
Shouldn't we do that?
I'll put a thing in the newsletter.
Thank you.
How about you, Debbie?
Uh, I don't think I have anything, unless you, no, I don't think I have anything.
How about you, Debbie? Bonnie?
Bonnie?
Hey, me, whatever.
The one on the end.
Bonnie.
I got nothing.
How about you, Mike?
Um, well, I was gonna just say that I was happy that the sledge is gone, like we can get easily six months or more now out of this space. Because from now until November, it'll be like paper, it'll be really easy and light, um, and then, um, I know the city council approved the camera that we're gonna share with Kendrick, Jake received part of it today. Uh, and so I talked to Bonnie, her and maybe even we'll work together when the bill comes in, it was actually about a thousand less than the twenty thousand. So, um, anyway, just wanna let you know that it's here and he was training on it today and he wants to train Josh and I and get us going on it, so. Uh, and then the other thing is, um, Stillman sent me this request for information, so they're in the design phase of the wa- the new wastewater plant. He wants these ten tests done every week for ten weeks. So they can design the water plant for all of those specifications now. Um, we do four here, so I can do those four myself in our own lab, the other ones I can't do, so I'll have to go to Anatech once a week for the next ten weeks. There's gonna be additional cost, uh, and I mentioned to Bonnie, we might, so pulling that out of the sewer general budget, that might be able to just come out of the part of the grant funding we're already getting for the sewer plant. I don't, I don't know how expensive these are, I can find out, but they're just general, I mean phosphorus tests.
But we have the money in the budget, so it's not like you're gonna go over budget unless it's like five hundred thousand dollars for a thing.
No, but I just wanna let you know that if, I mean, I'm gonna be going, I'm gonna have to be going every week now for ten weeks, so. And I, this was supposed to be done in May and I didn't realize it, so. Like it was an attachment and I didn't see it, but it was brought to my attention, so, real good thing here.
Does anyone have a question?
Yeah, that's all I have, just.
Mike?
Mike.
Um, couple of things, the fire department's been awarded a grant from Idaho Department of Land for thirty four hundred dollars for tools and, and PPE. And today we also took delivery of a fire danger sign from Idaho Department of Land's and the Forest Service that we wanna put up at the fire hall, even supplied the metal fence posts for, or the sign posts, we're gonna be state legal, but. Have a question, the railroad grade down there, does that belong to the state or does that belong to the city?
The railroad what?
Railroad grade.
You don't railroad track bed.
Well, the highway department, well, it's.
Cause I've already talked to the state.
And the state do not claim it.
Well, the guy I talked to had no clue that there was a railroad grade that went down through there, and I was like, you know, what kind of a railroad guy are you? But, um.
Really, it's really the city's because the highway department doesn't go that far over, it just goes over there. Oh, it's probably, it's probably twenty feet toward the highway, the line.
So coming off of, for instance, the fog line, they only have ten feet?
Well, no, twenty feet from the, the trail line where the.
Oh, oh, oh.
Over the, toward the highway.
Oh, cause, uh, I called about a permit to put up that sign, but ideally I'd like to be back far enough away from the highway so that the snowplows don't destroy it. Cause this is like a thousand dollar sign that we got today, I haven't opened it yet, it's still in the back of the pickup. Um, haven't decided where to put it, uh, down there, but if it's a one sided sign, that's gonna be a different story than a two sided sign. I, I haven't had the time to cut, cut the box open and look yet, um, but if we encroach a little bit on towards the, uh, railroad grade, and I don't wanna, of course, plant it in a railroad grade, I don't wanna block the haul road. Um, uh, but the state couldn't give me an answer about the railroad game.
State, the state, uh, right away is forty feet from the center line.
Forty feet from the center line, okay.
Yeah, that's right.
I can figure that out real quick, okay?
Don't get run over.
No, no, not yet anyhow. Um, so, do I need to have permission from the city council to put this thing up?
Put it up.
Thank you.
Do you?
Well, it's not in.
Do you?
We can't.
So, there's usually an application for that, and on the application, it says, uh, minutes and zoning, if it's in zoning, if it's in the city limits, you're gonna have to go to zoning deal, even if it's the city.
Then, then I have a conflict of interest already because I'm on the P and Z also.
Yeah.
They're already passed.
Give me a clifford.
I don't think there, you have to worry about it.
You still have time to sign.
I think our code already covers it.
Oh, does it?
I, I like to not have to deal with transportation department, I don't wanna be on their, their right away.
Mike, I think if you read the city code.
I'll look.
The way it's zoned, I think that it's mentions in the signs and things, I may be wrong, but the two cities to keep track of, yeah, cause the way it's.
Way.
Yeah. I know it does mention sign, but I don't know if it does.
So the, so we need to find out if it has to be on the minutes and all of that? So, I guess look at the.
I'll look at, I'll look at the book.
And then decide if you need to be on the agenda for next month.
Well, IDL would like to have us, have us put that up before Blackberry Festival i- if that was possible, cause they wanna do, since the feds paid for the sign and gave it to the state, which gave it to us, we gotta jump through some hoops and have some pictures with Smokey Bear and with the sign planted to satisfy the powers that be and.
Well, if we need to have a special meeting, then we can.
Well, I'll look in, I'll look in the, in the notebook and, and see what we got, then go from there. I did, I did, that's the guy I talked to.
Anything else?
Is it?
I move to adjourn?
I second.
Yeah, this guy had no. I know out of town.